In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has given adequate notice of this meeting by having published the date, time, and place of this meeting in the Home News Tribune and has posted notice of this meeting at the Middle School, 330 Wayne Street, Highland Park, New Jersey. Lynda, can I have the roll call, please?
Ms. Versa? Ms. Berkowitz?
Here.
Ms. Bull?
Here.
Ms. Simorusti?
Here.
Mr. Dietz?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Ms. Sherber?
Here.
Mr. Sherman?
Here.
Mr. Wharton?
Here.
Can everybody rise for the pledge, please?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Do you want to do that?
Yes.
Okay. Let's, let me get, let me move, hold on, let me move to the presentations and do that during the presentations. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of November 17th, please?
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? Lynda, roll call, please.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
abstain.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Wharton?
Yes.
Can, Lynda, are there any communications for the board, please?
Yes. I was asked to share a letter that we received from the Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital. It was addressed to the Highland Park Middle School, attention Donna Malouf. They wrote a letter to Ms. Malouf and the Middle School Student Congress thanking them for a donation of Halloween goodie bags for the children at the Bristol Myers Squibb Children's Hospital.
Thank you. Israel, can we have superintendent's report, please?
Yes, we will begin with student update.
Okay, so, we'd like to begin with achievements. I tend to paraphrase this, but it was actually pretty well stated, so I'll just read what happened for service day. On the day before Thanksgiving, Student Congress organized the Second Annual Highland Park High School Service Day, inviting student organizations to run workshops that help local community charities. So with the help of Teen Center, DECA, National Honor Society, Global Awareness Group, and the Environmental Club, students found many ways to give back to their community. By learning about how a local organization provides seeing eye dogs to those in need, students started the day inspired to volunteer. Then, by participating in five workshops, students wrote letters for members of the military, created environmentally friendly planters, designed to place mats for meals on wheels, completed bracelets for orphans, and crafted seasonal decorations for children at a nearby hospital. Finally, before leaving for the holiday break, students heard from community volunteers that have given their life to service. Overall, the student body made a significant effort to bring community service into the school in a way that should have a real impact on those in need outside of the school just in time for Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
So, I know we've been talking a lot about the robotics room and how it's been getting set up and cleaned up and, you know, getting set up for our team, but we finally, you know, adjusted to it. We've got tables, we've got chairs, we've got a real place to do work and build robots, basically. And we're so grateful that an HPEF grant is helping to provide needed materials and storage units, so I think that stands for Highland Park Education Fund.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, that's, that's going to help us so much. I mean, we bring a projector every meeting down from Ms. Maharana's room, she's the math teacher, and we use that to show blueprints, show working designs, and we really have a big room to help us build robots, basically.
The winter sports are underway. It's wrestling and basketball this season, and practices have begun, and everyone has high hopes, especially the basketball teams. They just recently moved back down to the gold division from the blue division, and they're working to be at the top of the division. And wrestling is growing. They have a lot of new members this year, which is great for the team's longevity.
So, really quick, we got 222 students who earned high honor roll or honor roll for the first marking period, and just a, just a really quick summarization of that. That's 47% of, I think our high school, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, 47% of our high school reached that achievement mark. I think that's amazing. Not to say people who didn't achieve, achieved under that aren't amazing, but that's, we're a great school, we still are, and we will leave for the future, and I think our grades and our achievement really show that. Also, before we made this report, we got a shared document from Mr. Lassiter about, it was a document by NJ Monthly Magazine. It showed the top 100 public schools in NJ, and I'm happy to say that Highland Park High School and the Highland Park, yeah, Highland Park High School is ranked 74th. Just like, quick statistics, so for percent enrolled in college 16 months after high school, we have, we have 84. And also, near that percentage, 80, 90% of our students who take AP exams get a score of three or higher. Now, these subjects aren't easy. We've got a lot of work every day, we've got a lot of homework, classwork, projects, seminars, books, lectures. We have to process all of this, and some people take four or five AP classes, their junior and senior year. Some people even taking classes summer year to skip a prerequisite to take AP classes. So, like I've said before, this isn't easy, and to say that we get such a high percentage of people who score over three is just amazing. And those people are definitely, you can be sure that they're going to get credit in college to further their college education and further their future and their lives. And it's sad isn't me to say this, but we just had RUMEN, that's Rutgers-Mali United Nations, for those of you don't know, and I've been a member of Rutgers-Mali United Nations for, you know, since my freshman year of high school. It's been such a great experience.
No more RUMEN?
No, not for him, for seniors.
Oh, I was about to say.
Well, for me, too. I'm a senior right now.
Right, for seniors, not, not, we're not ending the program.
Right, right, we're not ending the program, that's, no. We just came back from the program. It was a conference at the Hyatt Regency Hotel. People come from around the world. We had people from Dubai, we had people from Dominican Republic, coming to speak in front of committee rooms, coming together to solve global problems and really simulate what the United Nations is all about. And as I was leaving the hotel room, as my dad was picking me up, taking me back home, I can remember the first time I went up to speak, which was my freshman year, it was in a committee called the World Bank. We were solving debt, we were trying to restructure policies so that countries could pay back loans that they got and not fall into a vicious cycle of debt. And I remember the first time I spoke, but as I left, I remembered how much I'd gotten, how much I'd improved, how much, how much faster I could think on my feet, and how that's, a large part of that is because of the program we have here at Highland Park High School. This program is different from other schools. We don't have classes that people have to take. We don't, we don't grade people on how much they speak at the conference. We grade Highland Park High School's performance as how it compares to other people and how we interact with other schools, how we carry ourselves, the respect we show to other delegates, how we carry other people on our shoulders when they can't find the support they need for themselves. If they have new people, if they have novices who frankly aren't confident or can't speak themselves but have great ideas nonetheless and great resolution ideas, Highland Park is, in my experience, is the school that picks those kids up and really helps them achieve higher heights and higher goals and really bring out the confidence that helps them write great lessons, resolutions, and solve these global problems. And so, you know, we also have Philman, we also have RMC, but truly Rutgers United, Rutgers University, Mali United Nations holds a special place in my heart.
Very well said.
Moving on to announcements, HP presentation is this Friday, December 12th, in the high school cafeteria at 7:30 PM. That's not noted on here, but it's 7:30. And it's just $5. It's a fundraiser for the senior class. Students will be performing and presenting original artwork, poetry, and music, as well as the premiere of a student film, The Presenter. For those of you with high school students, yearbooks are on sale for $90. You have to have a down payment of $20 by December 20th, and we encourage any town businesses looking to support the school, they can advertise in the yearbook as well. The Spring Musical, there's actually a change on this, so the first production meeting for those interested in Tech Crew is tomorrow, December 9th, but the first meeting for those interested in auditioning is December 16th, after school. We'd also like to say that, so Ms. Maharana, one of our math teachers, is resigning to pursue a position at another district, and we, the students, as well as the community, deeply regret to see her go, but, you know, we're excited for her. This is like a new chapter in her, you know, educational, yeah, career. And she's, she's one of my favorite teachers. She teaches calculus, and we absolutely adore her. She's fantastic, but we just wish her all the best. Finally, we have the results from the survey that we conducted. Took a while, but we have it. So we ask permission from the board for a specific time slot on next meeting's agenda to present our results, if that's doable.
Next meeting may, next meeting, so there will be, we reorganize at the next meeting? You can talk to Mr. Soto, but whoever the new board president is will have to, I guess, kind of figure out if that's what we want, if we can do it at next meeting.
It may have to wait.
Yeah, it may have to wait to the meeting after.
Okay, well, even, you know, even if there would be the next meeting, that would just give us extra time to make a really rock-solid presentation.
So I would, I would count on probably, I would count on probably the following meeting, which would be January 20th, I believe.
Yep, that's fine.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you so much, and I want to congratulate all of the teacher staff and students at the high school, you know, to rank 74th. I know you guys are working very diligently and very hard to reach new heights, and certainly we're excited for you and excited for this town. Back in September, various issues were brought to my attention, some concerns related to ESL instruction, the current scheduling, and benchmarking. And because of that, various committees were formed with the goal of identifying those key issues and providing recommendations for my review and approval during the month of December. We're hoping to put everything in place in January. Tonight, we have various team members that will be sharing with you those findings and recommendations. Before they begin, however, in addition to that, we were looking at, back in September, the need to improve our website. We're looking currently, Saskia and Chris, they're working very diligent and very hard in preparing the type of website we can all feel proud of. We're looking at a website that is very, you know, informative, where, yeah, user-friendly, streamlining all of the communication, the type of website that can provide some internet capabilities, streaming videos, e-textbooks, where the kids can have access to their homeworks just in case they, their apps, where the parents can be well-informed in terms of the curriculum and what's happening in the classrooms, blogging, emergency novacations via your computers and your iPhones. So we're looking at all of those wonderful opportunities, and hopefully we'll have more information during the month of January. That's our targeted date, so we're looking at various companies that will enable us to have that capability here at Highland Park. So let's begin with the presentations for tonight, and we have an ESL presentation, so we welcome Willem Schlala and Jennifer Knapp.
And the associates.
Is everyone here?
So you?
And associates.
Is that mic working right there?
Yes.
Okay.
I promise to be on my best behavior tonight, so I'm not going to mention anything at all about Saturday's game between two unnamed in-state basketball teams. Go Pirates! Our presentation, as some of you know, this came out during the beginning of this school year when there were some issues that were being raised about our bilingual and ESL program. And at that time, I know there was a good deal of conversation in the community and here, and we wanted to represent that conversation, that we were all happy that we were able to get together and discuss what was happening. But by the end of the conversation, we absolutely have come here. We had a committee of teachers, community members, administration, that worked for hours on this, people with very strong opinions. And what we discovered was that by talking through it, by working through it, and by the art of compromise, we came to something that we feel will provide the district with a roadmap for the future. Doesn't mean it's perfect. It's a roadmap to the future. So, we've basically mentioned to you already the reasons for this, and the reasons were staffing problems, difficulties around the implementation of sheltered instruction, and the push-in and pull-out elements of ESL instruction, the fact that there was a lack of training for staff. The first training for sheltered instruction occurred about three days before school began. There were disagreements over the best implementation models. So there's a bunch of discussion topics, and we're going to tell you about those discussion topics. Except now I have to hold the microphone and turn the page at the same time. We may be asking a lot from me. All right. Population. Our numbers, we found out, fluctuate over the course of the year. We have children coming in and children going out. Class ratios, we find, especially if you're going to bunch children into a class, become unmanageable. We have too many children being grouped because of the way we approach sheltered instruction.
Another discussion was the class placement determination. In our discussions, the committee identified that many of the ELL students are not assessed until after the school year starts, so they're placed into classes without regard to their skill levels.
The other problem is that we don't typically assess potential ESL students before we actually put them into classrooms, especially those children who come in during the summer. They come in, they get assigned to a class, and then all of a sudden we find out, uh-oh, they need ESL instruction. And we shouldn't have that uh-oh. We should be assessing children as they come in for their needs.
Scheduling. Scheduling actually wasn't initially part of the discussion, but as the committee was meeting and talking, we realized that the decision to place all the students into designated classes came with the revision of the 2014-2015 master schedule. And it made it difficult to schedule push-in and pull-out times within that schedule.
Somehow I feel I missed something. Hold on, I may have gone a page too much. Do you have it? Heterogeneity. One of the problems we encountered was that between sheltered instruction, push-in and pull-out, and the mixing of ESL levels in that. So we had ESL I students and ESL II students, and they need to be approached differently. And a good deal of our discussion focused on that, and in the end result, we agreed. There's no single, you can't decide to have a single model and expect that a single model's going to work for all children. It's, it's fitting children into a model rather than have the models work around the children. Doesn't work.
I'm sorry, Mr. Schlala, can you explain what ESL I, II, and III are?
We're going to hold on, board questions until the end of the presentation.
Okay. And you know what? I'm going to have Deidre answer that when it comes to time.
We're going to wait, though.
Okay. The next is the instructional and social needs of ELL students. In order to succeed in an academic setting, ELL students need to develop vocabulary, functional language phrases, and syntactic structures, and also require assistance adjusting to a new environment. We all agreed on the committee that the multilingual ability of ELL students should be considered an asset to our schools and our district and community. To meet the instructional and social needs of our ELL students, staff training and ELL development and instructional strategies are needed, along with professional development on cultural sensitivity, so that all the staff can better meet the needs of our ELL population. All these factors should be considered in the programs and structure and teacher professional
Resources. The most pressing problem in resources is staffing. The end of last year, we had a full-time ESL instructor retire from the district. That position was not filled. That had us running for the hills to try and provide programming. In fact, we owe a debt of thanks to Mr. Benjamin, because he took a teacher who'd been hired to do Spanish and asked that person if they would help out in the ESL program. Otherwise, we'd be in a worse fix than we are today. So we focused on that staffing need. With the ever-increasing needs of the ESL population, we cannot ignore that that staffing issue occurred. Materials is a little different. Some of us think that we need to spend some money and get some materials. There are others who say, no, teachers can make materials, they just need some assistance. They may need to have a para available to help them do that kind of thing. So that was that part.
Professional development. As Bill mentioned, the sheltered instruction professional development started right before school for teachers. They now since have had one other training and are having actually another training tomorrow. But in order to make sheltered instruction successful and for teachers to be able to effectively distribute students across the grades, we feel that all the elementary teachers need to be trained in sheltered instruction to allow us to be able to place ELL students in any of the elementary classrooms, and those teachers have the training and the ability to effectively teach these students.
Communication with families of ELL students. Our ELL students and often their parents don't understand some of the announcements we send home in English. Our discussion centered on what kinds of things can we do to see that they receive information in need and also to better integrate them into the community that is our school, and at the same time, respecting their own cultures. And what can we, as a larger community, gain from that?
Levels and exit criteria. The committee had a discussion that the movement of children into the programs through and exit from ESL programs must be based on multiple criteria, not just one identifier. This would include test data, grades, and both general education teacher input as well as ESL teacher input.
As I said to you, we had a broad base of people. One of our parents was going to present tonight and got ill. So we've been very fortunate to get two of our teachers to both jump in and to do different parts of what they were going to do before. So Judy, who is a teacher at Irving, and Deidre, who is an ESL instructor, are going, those were our discussions. Now we're going to suggest to you what our recommendations to you are.
Thank you. The first recommendation that the committee made was to fill the vacant ESL position that Bill had talked about, so that we could provide adequate coverage for both Irving and Bortles schools. Deidre, right now is running between buildings.
The second recommendation we had was to make sure we are meeting the state law requirements in bilingual slash ESL education. We are supposed to provide either bilingual education or an intensive ESL program to the students who are of one language background and are more than 20 in the district. In our report, at the end, Bill was kind enough to include some appendices. There's Appendix 3, the second part, shows what that might look like to have an intensive English ESL program. If you have a lot of kids with the same language background, then the state usually wants you to have bilingual education class. In order to get out of that requirement, you need to write up a plan to get a waiver. And in that plan for your waiver, you need to say how you will meet the needs of those students who belong to that large language, single language background. And we are meeting that for Mandarin Chinese. The code is in there, in the back, the first appendix.
One of our recommendations was to distribute ESL students across all classes at every grade level, rather than put them in a single classroom at each grade level.
We also discussed the master schedule and how sometimes it can limit the implementation of an ESL program, so hopefully we'll be looking at that when we make our master schedule.
As Janet mentioned, we also recommended that we develop a multi-year plan for providing all elementary teachers with sheltered instruction training so that they can meet the needs of all ESL students in their classes.
We talked about assessing new students before placing them into a class or an ESL level, particularly at the high school, middle school, for the levels, and to maybe try to not put many beginners of one language background in one group. One way we could do this would be to have them given the entrance test before we actually assign them a class or a schedule.
In order to effectively distribute all students in need of support services and to plan for these services, principals should try to create preliminary classroom lists by the end of June.
We also live in a wonderful community, and we hope to establish relationships with nearby universities where they could perhaps place students in our programs who are doing their practicum or their student teaching experience and Rutgers.
Okay. The community we do live in affords us a working relationship with Rutgers. The committee would like to recommend that we establish a relationship with the Rutgers translation programs to support the translation of district materials and website information whenever it is feasible.
Bill told us about grant writers. Maybe we could find one, and that person could write a grant for us.
And I think Mr. Soto spoke about improving the district webpage to give the families of ELL students better access to the announcements and to all district information.
And of course, what committee would be complete without establishing another committee? Hopefully, we can have a committee for the ESL families. That includes the parents, the teachers, the administrators, the concerned community members who can speak more than one language. That would be great.
And we also recommending the creation of another committee. This would be established as a review committee, and it would be made up of administration, general education teachers, ESL teachers, and community members to regularly review the ELL program to ensure comprehensive pre-K to 12 program, and to make recommendations and report to the Board of Education as necessary.
Thank you.
Of course, recommendations come with budget implications. Some of the recommendations and discussions we had will include the cost of a full-time ESL teacher to replace the ESL teacher who retired. One thing that was left off the slide as well was that we had a discussion about, and the recommendations, were the stipends for ESL teachers to assess students in the summer prior to the start of the school year, so that way we are placing ELL students in their proper classes. Professional development for sheltered instruction over the next three years so that we can ensure that all elementary teachers are trained. And using our supplemental funds, our allocations of Title 2A, which is for professional development, Title III and Title III immigrant funds, these can be used to supplement our regular-day ESL program. For example, starting in, after Christmas, we are surveyed ESL parents, and we'll be starting an after-school ESL program to help support the students. So looking to what we can do for next year to supplement.
And in front of you are the members of the committee. And they, many of them will attest to you that I banged my head on the table a few times because the pain was less. But they were wonderful to work with, and they made, made this process a good and positive process. You've heard me say famously or infamously, that as I've looked at this district, it struck me that future planning was a day and a half ahead. Our idea with this is to create a real future planning. We don't expect tomorrow for the recommendations to be implemented. Some will. We are going to, going to plan on, on the sheltered instruction training. We're going to get that organized for the future. We're looking at the title funds. What can we do immediately with that? Can we get the raw materials, which is relatively inexpensive, that teachers need to make the kinds of materials they need? Others are long-term and have budget implications. The restoration of the position that was eliminated, that's, that's one that's going to take time. The training of all elementary teachers with sheltered instruction, so we can distribute children across all the classrooms at all the grade levels. We have to get away in ESL and special education from grouping children into specific classrooms, which needlessly labels children, which inhibits our ability to meet the needs of children. And I'm going to finish with this. I've said it, say it the day I die, programs fit children. Programs fit children. Children never fit programs. It's the only way to do it. Thank you very much. And any questions you have, we'll take.
Thank you, Mr. -- Dr. Shalala. I would like to open it up. Thank you, thank you to you and your team for pulling this together. We'll make sure that the board gets full copies of the report. I read it over. It's very, it's very thorough and well, well presented. So I appreciate that. I'd like to open it up for board questions if anybody has.
I just want to say I fully agree with the idea that all elementary teachers should be trained in sheltered instruction. So I was very happy to see that in there. So thank you for that. And I also just, I want to recognize Mrs. Pocacei. She was my son's first grade teacher when we moved here almost 10 years ago. He is now in 10th grade and she made the transition to moving here so easy and possible for him. And she's a wonderful teacher and I just wanted to recognize her publicly.
She used her teaching skills to keep picking me under the table to calm down. So she's a good teacher.
Because she's a good teacher. She didn't want any upset in the room.
And just finally as well, as we are moving into budget season and you are looking for increases in certain programs and professionals, just reach out to the building principals and--
We'll be, we'll be discussing that with the superintendent and the BA next week, actually. And, and we're also preparing for a future meeting, a discussion of long-term special ed needs in the district.
I encourage you to bring all ideas to the table as seriously. It seems like we are in need of some remedies to some certain situations that have been going on. Thank you.
So of the recommendations, are there recommendations that you guys kind of have stacked in terms of importance? What needs to happen immediately, right now, like tomorrow? Get on this? These kids this year need this and these are the things that can wait until next year?
I think there were like about a dozen recommendations. The first four or five are in priority order.
Okay.
After that, we kind of felt, well, they all kind of fit together at this point. So we're not prioritizing beyond that.
So clearly, the teacher, the sooner we can get another teacher, the better.
Yeah. That's, but again, that's our, that's a next year recommendation.
Or is it an hour? I mean, I seem to be getting a hard "now" from the rest of the committee, so.
Let me answer that question. I, I don't think we're at that point of hiring another ESL teacher for this particular year, although that is important and we'll have further discussions. But I'll tell you some of the areas that we will be focusing on. That's a question that I can answer. Number one, we're going to be focused on the resources that we have available. We're going to be focusing on the proper training that the teachers need. And by the way, the, the training that we're talking about is not sit and listen. The type of embedded classroom instructional professional development that needs to go on further than just regarding just strategies. You know, we, we want teachers to feel comfortable knowing those strategies, what sheltered instruction looks like, what does it feel like, and have someone to coach them when we have these consultants coming in. So we're already working that through. So that's embedded classroom professional development. We're looking at how are we going to provide ongoing student monitoring so we can avoid stacking up kids just because they're ESL kids, all right? We need to do a better job in defining what is ESL kid? What is a bilingual kid? If that child has not been properly assessed, now how do we know he's a bilingual child? All right? We have many bilingual children. We have some that speak English very well. You know, how do we know that? So we need to do a better job and how do we assess kids at the beginning of the school year so we can probably accommodate them and, and give them the resources that they need. And last but not least, we're going to do a better job and how do we translate and, and build a better communication system, not only with our Latino families, but with all families. And so we're looking into doing that. And, and part of our endeavor is to create that situation with, with our new website where it can be translated into various languages and we've had conversations about that. So those are the four areas that we're going to be focusing on now as we look into the three-year plan.
So do we have a timeline for that? Do we have a timeline for when the teachers are going to be receiving this instruction? Because I mean, you know, we--
Oh, that's happening already. Oh, yeah. In fact, how many have we offered, Jen?
The training.
How many trainings have we offered already?
There are two and there's one more.
There's one more, all right? And we're looking for a consultant to come in to provide that embedded type classroom professional development. So we're already starting to interview people.
And so in terms of the classes that are already established, clearly for this year, we're not talking about making any changes to those classrooms.
I don't, I don't, I don't think so.
Not, not at this point. That's all going to be part of the discussion for, as we move forward towards next year. Again, that's the whole idea of we could do things, but we wouldn't have the time to see what the reactions to those things are, the unintended consequences. What I want to do, which we haven't done in the past a lot of times, is plot out what we're doing so we can say, okay, this is the positive potential impact, this is the potential negative, and the board has the knowledge they then need to make a truly intelligent decision.
That's good.
And so, I'm sorry, I have one more thing. And so moving forward from this point, the practice so far, I believe, has been, as you said, this is a very, this can be a very transient population with kids leaving, kids coming in and all different points of the year. Is the plan to still moving forward to continue to put all those students into one classroom?
No.
Or the plan is now to start spreading those?
No, we have, we've already begun spreading them.
All right. So we're not going to be increasing numbers in any of the classes, whatever is there is there now, those numbers will not be increasing.
We're distributing. And our, and our current staff has been, I mean, I can't give, Fanny's not here tonight, Morrissey's not here, Deidra is. I can't give them enough credit for adapting to this situation and truly being not just instructors, but instructional leaders in getting the job done.
So right now, we're in the process of, we have a choice and the choice is this. We are currently in the process of smothering the fire, right? Do we want to continue smothering the fire or do we want to avoid the fire? Well, in order for us to avoid the fire, we need more planning and to make sure that in the future, these future initiatives are done correctly, well thought out and well planned so we won't have one more presentation to, to address situations that should have been addressed back in September.
Very well, very well said. So let's, let's just talk about, I guess, communication as well. It looks like we need to focus on Mandarin as well. It looks like that's our primary lang, our most spoken language at home besides Spanish.
Yes. It's actually the, I believe in one of your appendixes, you have the language groups?
Yeah.
And I believe Mandarin is the single largest group. While this program, this committee primarily focused on the elementary level, we were cognizant of the secondary issues. And on the secondary level, we're going to have to be able next year to schedule to provide two periods a day, one of which will be specifically ESL instruction. The other may occur in, for example, a language arts, English class kind of thing. We're going to have to provide two hours at that secondary level.
It looks like it, just especially with that large influx.
Yeah. We might, we have to do that.
Okay. Oh, yep.
While Mandarin Chinese is the largest language group of the students in the ESL program, I would say in the district, the largest second language is Spanish. And I would love to see our Spanish teacher have the time in her schedule for Bartle Schools Latinos to have a Spanish as a second language class.
Perfect. That sounds, that sounds quite excellent and that's something that you should, that's something you should look in for, for next year's master schedule. If there's no other comments on this, I would like to move on to the benchmarking.
Actually, I have a question.
Yep, absolutely.
So I know one of the points that Mr. Soto mentioned was the resources and who should be creating the resources or if they should be getting more resources to use to teach the kids. Um, yeah, I've never been in ESL, so--
Use your mic, please.
Yeah, it's working. All right. So I've never been in ESL, so I guess this is coming from a different perspective. You know, what are the, what's the level of tech that teachers use in ESL to teach? Or is it just like a teacher-student connection where they keep speaking with each other and develop their knowledge of language?
A lot of the materials are things that teachers themselves make based on the work they're doing, say, in English language instruction with kids. They may be, they may be connective kind of things that, that connect the child's native language with English, a whole bunch of, of stuff. It doesn't necessarily, and this was part of the debate. Some of us said, well, you know, let's get some money, we'll go high-tech. Some of us, those with more experience with kids, said, nah, you don't need high-tech. What you need is give them the raw materials and the time to put together the stuff to work with the students. So we're more leaning towards that.
Oh, I do also think you do need high-tech. You need to allow these students who don't have access to certain particular technology at home to not be kind of left behind in this--
Well, that's, that's another issue, but relates, yes, absolutely.
So we do, we need to include that in the conversation as well. So very good question, yes.
Sorry, one more question.
Absolutely, that's what we're here for.
I, I actually was talking about this in my--
Mike, sorry, Mike as well.
In my Spanish class.
There you go.
About how it seems that, like, there's this, and this is larger than Highland Park, but that there's this, this stigma surrounding ESL students and ELL students. And it's really unfortunate because, you know, bilingual students are something to be celebrated, you know, not discouraged. And I was just wondering if you have any way of addressing that? I mean, because Highland Park's such a diverse community, it would be great to--
Well, there was a good chunk of time at one of our meetings that actually focused on that. Liliana Sanchez was leading that charge. And we don't have specific recommendations at this point, but our belief is that what the community has to do is learn to celebrate the diversity of language and culture it has. And this is an amazing community in terms of diversity, but I'm not sure we focus on it enough and we celebrate it enough. So that's not going to be a turnaround and just do it in a heartbeat, but I think we need to have input on that. And quite frankly, I think, you know, sitting here listening, I have a hunch there's, there's students in the high school who might be helpful to us in helping develop things at the middle and high school level. And we're going, our conversation has not ended. Our committee's ended, our conversation has not ended.
Well, I, I think that's a good idea to tap our high school students. They, as you can see from Rutgers Model UN, they have experienced the world right in New Brunswick.
See, you volunteered for something.
And I, I just want to thank all the members of the committee and Mr. Soto for putting this together, for putting a timeline together and for putting together concrete recommendations. I think that's so fantastic that we're coming up with a plan.
Well, we'll make sure that the full board gets the full memo and so we can all review it.
Okay. Let's move on to benchmarking. I know that's been a hot topic since last year and, you know, I know a lot of people and Darcy had numerous occasions had asked about where I'll be with the benchmarking, what happened to last year's benchmarking and moving forward, what's going to happen. So I asked, we had a deep conversation with Jen Knapp and Jen, Jen Knapp is going to share some, some insight regarding where we're at and where we're going at this point.
I have to acknowledge my ignorance. I'm a math person. I can't make PCs do anything.
Then does that ice cream cake? Is that an ice cream cake? I didn't know it was melting.
I'm going to share a little bit about benchmark assessments in our district. Just a brief overview on benchmarks. Benchmarks assessments are common assessments given to all students in a similar course or grade level.
I'm sorry, I'm being in the mic place today, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
There we go.
There we go. As I was saying, benchmarks assessments are common assessments given to all the students in the same course or a grade level. Benchmarks here in Highland Park are given once per quarter or trimester in math and language arts, English language arts. So it works out to the students are taking a benchmark assessment about every three The data collected from the benchmarks, the data collected provide valuable information for classroom instruction as well as providing the school and district with decision-making ability. They provide information of where the students are at that moment and they also allow for the teachers to modify their instruction based on the students' needs from what they see from those benchmark assessments. A little bit of history, in the spring and summer of 2014, new benchmarks were written for mathematics and English language arts. Also, in the spring of 2014, Study Island was renewed for the 2014-2015 school year. For those of you who don't know what Study Island is, it is a computer-based program that can be used for assessment as well as classroom instruction and assignments. While the new benchmarks were being written in math and language arts, many questions were raised about the number of benchmarks being written for English language arts and the impact that that would have on instruction. Coming into this school year, there were many discussions with administrators and teachers about the benchmark assessments. And from all the input and feedback we received, the decision was made to use a combination of the Study Island benchmarks as well as the new benchmarks that were written. Currently, all grade levels are using a selection of the newly written writing benchmarks. I say a selection because there were a large number of assessments written for each quarter. The teachers met by grade level or department and they looked through the writing assessments available and they chose one assessment per quarter or trimester depending on the building that the students are in. The students chose the writing pieces that they felt would provide them with the most information on their students and give them the best data. For mathematics, grades K through 2 are using the new math benchmarks that were written over the summer, just as they were written and approved. Grades 3 through 8, Algebra 1, Algebra 2, and Geometry are using the Study Island benchmarks. All other mathematics classes in the high school are using the new benchmarks or previously approved benchmarks because not all courses had rewrites this summer. For reading, grades 3 through 11 are using Study Island. Grade 12 does not have Study Island available for it, so they are using the new benchmarks in reading. Again, the teachers were given the opportunity to review all the benchmarks that were written. They met, they discussed it, and they chose ones that would be appropriate to give them the best data. And they made sure to choose two fiction pieces and two nonfiction pieces so that they were addressing both genres. The reasons, oh, sorry. The reasons behind our decision, as we started the new school year, we felt that we needed more time to review all the reading and writing benchmarks to help reduce the number and make sure we were choosing quality assessments. Looking at the benchmarks as well, Study Island is aligned to the park assessment, which the students will have to take in the spring. So not only is it giving us the data on how the students are progressing through the standards, but it's also giving the students practice with some of the features that they will be seeing on the new state assessments. Also, district money was invested in both Study Island and the benchmarks that were written. And we did not want to throw either of those away. We invested money in both. So, and after the discussions and the input with the teachers and administrators, we felt finding a balance between the two would be the best. Moving forward, as we enter 2015, a benchmark committee will be formed with administrators and teachers to review what has been done so far during this school year, look at all the benchmarks that are available that were written, and really assess what will be the best for assessing our students and showing us their progress and to the Common Core standards. The committee will then make recommendations for the 2015-2016 school year and with approval, the benchmark schedule will be revised as necessary. Okay? Thank you, and I'll take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Knapp. I first just want to acknowledge from my conversations with Israel and a number of our administrations, you have put a number of, a number of hours into both the benchmarking and the ESL presentations. And I thoroughly want to thank you for that and I know you've put your heart and your soul and you really brought us-- put your heart and your soul, and you really brought us some great recommendations and some information on it, so thank you for that.
You're welcome.
With that, does anybody have any hard questions for Ms. Knapp?
I don't think I have a hard question. So it sounds like for each grade, it's kind of a mishmash of both the Study Island and the benchmarks, some that were previously written benchmarks?
Well, only for, like, calculus, most of the, are the new benchmarks written. It's only for some of the high school courses.
So is there, like, a schedule by grade, or, like, in, like, say, 3 through 8, is there a scheduled course of benchmarks for the students?
Yes.
Between the Study Island and that, can we see that? Like, can the board get that?
Oh, yes, I can give you a copy of the schedule. Yeah, and it has basic months where the assessments need to be given. Study Island is open for a short time period, like a two-to-three-week time period where the students are all assessed during that time period.
And how does that work with just four in the classroom? Are the teachers finding that manageable?
Oh, no, we have the carts that come to the, yeah, to the classroom, so there's, the whole class can take it at the same time. It's not just four.
Are the benchmarks grade-wide, or is it per class?
Grade-wide. That's, that's what benchmarks, so that all the students can be, the data can be compared across all the students.
And you're, I think you were just pretty much saying that not everybody takes it on the same day, though?
No, well, the grade level, like, for Study Island, because of the computer situation, they take it within the same week.
Okay.
So a grade level would take it within the same week.
And for the high school, are they taking it more or less on the same schedule?
Yes.
Jen, I'm sorry, I have a question about the park assessment. Is there gonna be some information for parents?
Yes, I was, I was gonna mention that. A flyer actually went out today, on January 14th, we will be having a parent information night so that you can learn about the new park assessment, how it aligns to the Common Core. We will be showing sample questions, we will have computers available for any parents who would like to get on and actually take the practice test to see what the students will be doing with that.
It's really hard.
It is.
I took the practice test, I'm in graduate school right now, and I had some issues answering some of those questions, I'll tell you that.
And I saw the flyer that went out, and I would like, just, just like to make a recommendation that we give parents a little bit more information. I think some of the parents are gonna get that flyer, and be like, what's a park? Like, assessment for what? Like, it doesn't explain that this is the new state standardized assessment, replacing NJASK. I think a lot of people are gonna get that and be like, what grades? I don't know, who's taking it? Like, I think it needs to be fleshed out a little bit, so parents, more parents may have a sense of urgency to get a sense of understanding of, you know, what that session's gonna be about.
We can send out a letter from the central office.
I think also it will be helpful to explain that the park scores will not count.
Count this year.
For a little while. Things are gonna get phased in, because I think people get really scared when they see the questions, because they are really hard, but nobody's being held accountable to getting a certain score immediately.
Yes.
Thank you for that recommendation. That communicates that the parents will be forthcoming from, from, from the superintendent's office.
Are there any other questions?
Uh, yeah, I had another question. I had a question specific to Study Island. So is Study Island just being used, then, for the benchmarking, or is it, is there also a schedule that's recommended for teachers of using it in terms of the prep for parks?
It's different in each building, but they do use it for classroom instruction and practice as well, and they give assignments in the classroom.
Gotcha.
With seeing no more questions, I would like to move to thank, I would like to thank everybody who prepared the benchmark presentation, the Snap in particular, and like to move to the master scheduling presentation.
Yeah.
So while Mr. Benjamin is setting up the slides, I'd like to let you all know how the collaboration came together. When we realized that there were many issues with the schedule that was given to us at a very late date, we came together through collaboration with the association members and our administrators and Mr. Soto, and we all recognized that there was an issue with the schedule, there were many issues with the schedule. So we identified the issues, and we set goals for our committee, and we're going to review, Mr. Benjamin's going to review the slides with the objectives and how we met those objectives and what that means in clear terms. There will be a continuing conversation with staff after this presentation to go through the specific schedules, to get staff input, and also have them offer their ideas on what could even be better. So the actual schedules will be presented to staff, but this is the rationale, the objectives, and if you have any questions about the actual schedules themselves, we can also answer those.
Good evening, everyone, how are you? For those that don't know me, I'm Mr. Anthony Benjamin, I'm the new principal of Bartle Elementary. Actually, this week serves as marks as the fifth month that I've actually served as principal, or I've been selected to be principal of Bartle, so I'm very, very happy about that. Tonight, we're gonna engage in a presentation that will highlight aspects of an initiative that's been commissioned by Superintendent Soto back in October. What and why our task force was formed. Well, the task force was established by Superintendent October, and we were asked, when Superintendent Soto came to myself and Kim, he asked that we brainstorm and develop a plan of action around the master schedule and concerns that, that, there were some concerns in both Bartle and Irving. This was a response to the concerns from teachers and parents regarding class size, the quality of instruction in the classrooms, enrichment opportunities, student safety, and a host of other things that were presented to us. Our purpose was to improve those conditions and processes that continue to ensure students are successful and achieving, as well as supporting adults continuing to be held accountable. We all know we have high-performing, high-quality teachers in Highland Park, especially at Bartle, and we want to continue with that. They do a phenomenal job, so we really want to continue with that. Also, what we did, and I think Kim mentioned much of this earlier, is we engaged a cross-section of educators in our schools to research options and best practices to address the aforementioned concerns around class size, quality of instruction, and so forth. When we sat down our first meeting, we were sitting there scratching our heads in the superintendent's conference room, and we came up with a list of objectives, and then we began to start to narrow down those objectives. And the objectives that we actually have in front of us are pretty much some of many, but these were the ones that we really felt that we needed to present to the board and to the public so that we can garner the support necessary to move this initiative forward. One, we want to support the reduction of class sizes and discontinue the consolidation or the combining of three classes into two. Two, we want to support assigning specialists to one building exclusively, and I know that's something that our teachers have been very much in support of. We want to maximize enrichment opportunities for all students, as well as maximizing compliance, and I know I heard Deidre talk about that word earlier, with state and/or federal regulations. And lastly, we want to support a common planning time that meets once weekly, and we'll go further into that as we conclude with the slide. Our meeting structure and protocol, and Kim may have mentioned some of this, they started back in October. The committee included teachers, administrators, and a whole host of people, and one of the things that we would do is we would convene our meetings and briefly review any prior agenda items, and then begin to move forward with what was happening and what was on the current agenda. We researched and reviewed and investigated, oh, we did so much investigation, it was insane. In addition to talking to other committees and seeing what they were actually doing to make sure that it gelled with what we were doing. Past and current student enrollment numbers, which are huge, past and current master schedules, the past and current enrichment opportunities, student-to-staff ratios, policies, and a host of other data sources and pieces, sources of information. Out of this whole experience, we were, we were able to come up with four essential outcomes and deliverables as a result of what this initiative aims to do in terms of us developing this and/or engaging this master schedule. Those are maintaining the flow of general instruction for classroom teachers, which will go into depth, providing additional whole-school enrichment opportunities across subject areas inclusive of all students once a week, reducing class size and student-to-teacher ratios and specials, of course, and instituting, again, a common planning time. And this is not to be mistaken for common prep, which I think is something that we can go into at some other time. And the grade-level meeting time for staff members and administration, which is really, really critical. So let's go into O and D 1, outcomes and deliverable 1, which is to maintain the flow of general instruction for classroom teachers. This schedule would not negatively impact, the new schedule, sorry, would not negatively impact the commitment to engaging the core curriculum, specifically in the areas of English language arts and math. Currently, at Bartle and Irving, language arts is taught in the morning, and math is taught in the afternoon. Our research, the research, the best research and best prac, research on best practices shows that language arts is definitely something that we want to have, to continue to have taught in the morning. The new schedule, again, would maintain the integrity of this structure or instructional flow at both schools, leaving English language arts and math instruction respectively in the morning and in the afternoon. Outcome and deliverables 2, which is to provide additional whole-school enrichment opportunities across subject areas inclusive of all students once a week, is the opportunity to expand on the GNT-related experiences for all students, as well as incorporating electives that expand the curriculum. For example, if you're engaging in a language arts program and you want to expand on that, then we can have a class that does poetry, or if it's an art class, we can do something that we have been doing, which is ceramics. And so being able to support that from fitness classes, et cetera, yoga, and so forth. And these are essential for growing the whole child. I want to go back to the GNT program. I think Wendy, the GNT program, there was a presentation that had been given in prior weeks, and I think one of the things it's doing, we're doing very, very well with our GNT program, is really providing opportunities that are not just exclusive to a select group of students, but that really expand on all of our kids in our schools and giving them the opportunity to really see how it works to, to really think critically and to engage in projects and experiences that really help to grow them as well. Currently, again, there's only a limited GNT-related enrichment opportunities at both schools. From my understanding, based on the past, there had been a significant amount of programs that had been instituted, enrichment opportunities at both schools that are no longer here. The new schedule will provide course-option electives that are similarly offered, again, at both the high school and the middle school, really getting the students inspired and motivated to participate in things outside of the core. Outcomes and deliverables 3, which addresses reducing class size and student-to-teacher ratios and specials. The research clearly says that class size positively impacts student achievement, supports narrowing the achievement gap, as well as supports increasing student participation. Current class size, and I know this might appear to be somewhat disturbing, at Bartle, we have approximately 65 students with two teachers in one class. At Irving, there are 64 students approximately, I spoke to Kelly, with two teachers in one class. Clearly, that is not acceptable, that's not something that we want to espouse of our instructional programs here in Highland Park, not, you know, to the degree that we want to make sure that we're continuing with the quality of education that we provide our students. And our goal, again, is to reduce class size and to reduce student-to-teacher ratios. And lastly, our outcome and deliverables for number four, which is to institute common planning, not common prep, at grade-level meeting time for staff members and administration. Again, common planning will provide teachers the opportunity to work exclusively with team members, administration, and/or other internal and external resources and consultants to professionally develop, review daily student performance data, research and evaluate best practices. Currently, there is no common planning time. A new schedule will enable teachers' time at the end of the day to maximize this critical professional development opportunity. I know at some point in the series of questions that I anticipate, we'll be able to expound on this if, if asked. So, again, those are our four outcomes and deliverables that is related to this initiative, and I want to thank everyone, and here are some of the committee members that were really instrumental in making sure that we got the ball rolling to get the superintendent's initiative up and going. So, again, thank you.
Thank you both for putting, and your team for putting this together. I'd like to open it up for our board questions, if anybody has any. Okay, I have a few questions. Going back to the gym, are we prepared to discuss the potential of hiring a new, a new staff member for that period?
Yes.
Okay. Our presentation, something will be brought to the board in the near future? Sounds good.
Yes.
And that's, we'll be able to budget for that and, yeah, okay.
Yes.
All right. Terms of, you, you, you put a maximizing achievement opportunities for all, all students. Could you talk about some of those opportunities?
Were you want, did you want to know specifically about enrichment, or just the whole child, and how this fits in with general education?
Anywhere from the yoga, from the whole-child yoga stuff to the actual enrichment and GNT-type programs that will be given to all students?
The wonderful thing about this program and why we loved it so much in the past was not just the component of the common planning, which is so special and, and absolutely essential for teachers to have, but the fact that the flexibility that it allowed for, I mean, once a week may not seem like a lot with 45 minutes, but we suck every minute out of that time with those kids, and the opportunity to collaborate during that time and then build a plan for enrichment, because we actually have the time to sit down and are in fact mandated during that period to sit down together and go through our agenda. You can plan things that are now cross-curricular, and you have the time to implement it, that does not affect language arts instruction or math or anything else during the day. And now you have a team of people who have time to meet, have an agenda to meet about, and have the time to implement that in collaboration with their specials. So while, you know, yoga is an example, extended ceramics are an example, poetry is an example, and if we find that any, it's all within flux within a discussion with our administration. So if you find that there's a need for a certain area, or, you know, somebody comes and says, well, you know, my kids are really having trouble grasping patterns, this is something I'd really like help with, with working on, then we develop a whole enrichment program that involves patterns, it doesn't have to be math.
So.
But it's, it's very collaborative and integrative.
I think that's a very good answer, and so what I would encourage you to do is what I, we encouraged the ESL presentation is, as we are going into budget season, put stuff on your wish list for the superintendent and for the business administrator and for the board to look at for where you're looking for enrichment, because as so many people have said, Highland Park is a different place, and we do like to use that, those innovative approaches to really provide a different type of education.
Yes, and we have a template for this already since we've done it in the past, so it's not something that's new to Bartle and Irving, it's something that we've, I think it was about six years ago, that we were, that we stopped this program for various reasons, and we're just so excited to bring it back, and we're so excited for the opportunity for our kids and for our staffs.
Well, thank you so much for putting this together and helping Mr. Benjamin as well, and I guess the next stop is the high school as well?
High school and middle school will be having their, their own separate task force, and we're, we will put that together with the superintendent and put out a message to staff who want to be involved.
Thank you for putting this together, I really appreciate it. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just one quick one, sorry. You draw a strong distinction between planning and preparation. Could you just expand on that just for my understanding?
Planning and preparation as far as the...
The setting aside, setting aside time to schedule common planning versus common preparation?
Sure. The difference between, one of the issues with the schedule that we're working now is that pretty much everything was sacrificed for common prep time. And there was, there was an insinuation that common planning would be included in this schedule. The difference between common planning time and common prep time is that common prep time is just a same, the same time period, teachers have the same time period to prepare their regular lessons during the day. Call parents, prepare lessons, review IEPs. We have a whole three-page list of things that we actually do during that time. To have that time together, they are not, teachers are not, staff is not mandated to meet during that time. So to say that that's common planning is really not the appropriate term because there's no mandate. With, with common planning time, with true common planning time, you are mandated to meet during that time. It's time that is, you're not going to wander off to, you know, do your other duties. This is time that you meet with your team and it's very valuable and we're, we've had great success with that in the past, but there is a clear difference.
So basically what would happen is you would, all the teachers would still get their prep period.
Yes.
And you would have all, because you have a laundry list of things that you need to get done in the prep period and we all as parents marvel at how you get all these, you know, things done within a day.
Yes.
But then what you're doing is you're just creating one additional session per week.
Yes.
Where you can plan, so you can actually sit together and be like, here's what's going on for me. Okay, so that really helps me draw the distinction. I was having a hard time as well.
Educators do this on our own time, but because of our lives, schedules, you know, a crisis, whatever happens during the school day, it's not, it's not mandated for a reason. It's not mandated because it's not always feasible and it's not always something that you can get done during that time.
Right.
There are, as you said, many, many things that we're accomplishing during prep time and that spill over into the excess of the day.
Right.
But this time is, is so important because it is the time that, that we look forward to meeting together.
Right, but that really helps me finally understand how it impacted the schedule. Because if you all have to do this every day, then you do, you have to have to set up the schedule a certain way. But if your prep time can be whenever for individual teachers, then you're not impacting the schedule for the whole school.
That's right.
You're just, you're just looking at individual teachers, teacher schedules and then the only thing you have to plan for is that one individual planning period.
We, we do love to be together and we love to plan with each other and if that's possible, but that is not always possible with the prep time that we're given.
Are there any other comments? If not, I would like to move on. Okay. We have one last, do you want, are you saying it? Just me, okay. We have moved to the last part of the superintendent's report, which is reserved for board member recognition. Today is the last meeting of the current board. We will be swearing in three new board members as of January 5th. But we wanted to take this time and we're going to have a small, very quick, very quick reception to acknowledge the service of Daniel Ross, who is not here today, Greg Dietz, and Ashley Warren. I've been asked to say a quick few words and I will make sure that they are quick about each one of them. I just want to first acknowledge Mr. Ross, who is not here today. Mr. Ross served as board president for this last year, which was a, a, a challenging year for both the community and the board as a whole. Mr. Ross has served this board and served the role of president, which, with much dignity and commitment to the job. And we want to thank him for his attention to detail, his calmness, and his, his overall understanding of, of, of education and the situations that were happening in Highland Park. And so he definitely deserves a great deal of gratitude and thanks for his time on the board and in particular this last year as president. Mr. Dietz, you are here so you, I get to look at you and say, I'm sorry, you know, I wish you would have run. I thought we were going to do this forever together. We, you, you came to us through the budget committee, which was a great success of both the community and the board coming together. You, you got the, I guess, what do we call it? The, the want to serve your community a bit more on this board of education and you picked some issues that really mattered to you and you fought for them with, with, I guess, you fought for them with might and with an understanding and commitment to, to your beliefs and to the issues that meant a lot to you, your children and the community as well. So I want to thank you for your service and hope you will come back and join us one day. Mr. Warren, I kind of previewed what I was going to say to you because last night I was watching The West Wing and there was a quote on it that remind, that made me think of what I was going to say to you tonight and it was, "But if you don't run because you think it will be, it will be too hard or think you're going to lose, well, I don't want to know you." But you ran, you, you put up a good fight, you fought for the beliefs that you believed in, so I'm an honor to get to know you and to hear your voice on this board. I think you brought, you came up to us during a tumultuous time and you brought a great semblance of level-headedness that really helped the board see a different perspective during, during many contentious issues that were going. So you are with, it is a great loss to see you go, but I appreciate your time and your service to this board. Thank you very much. With that, I just want to see if there are any other board members who have anything else to say? Yes, absolutely.
This just popped in my head, something that happened this last year. I agree when you say this was a very challenging year and I'm actually happy where, to see where we've gotten and how we've improved. But Mr. Dietz here, I'd like to say, I remember that one time when this, this board was experiencing chaos, this community was experiencing chaos. People, people were mad, people were mistrusting, people, distrust was gone between the community and the board. And, can people hear me?
Yeah.
All right, yeah. So, all right, there we go. Yeah, this last year was chaos and people, you know, there were, the sense of trust between the community and the board was gone. And obviously I'm glad to see that it's back now, but there was this one time, you know, during the public comment section that I could see you were, you know, visually I could see you were irritated a little bit and you, I love the fact that you came up and you explained to everyone, when people said the board didn't care, you said, "No, we do care." And I could see it in your face that, you know, you really cared about, you know, you represented the whole board and you said that we did care, we did care about the problems. You know, we didn't really know where we were going now, but we want to solve this. We're with you." That you said, you know, I guess paraphrasing, that we're, we're with you till the end. And he was telling the whole community that we want to solve this issue just as much as you do. And it's not that we don't care, it's not that we don't, you know, want to help, it's that we just don't know how to right at this moment. And I think that's, I think that's a memory that I want everyone to have when he leaves.
Very well said.
Thank you.
Well, with that, we, the board looks forward to welcoming the three new board members who will sit with us in January. But we are going to take a quick two-minute recess, five-minute recess, but let's try to keep it closer to five minutes than 10 minutes to have some coffee and cake and congratulate everybody. So with that, I'd like a quick motion to recess?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Can I have a motion to reconvene in the public meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're back in session. I'd like to move, move to the, Mr., sorry, is there any other parts of the superintendent report? Okay. I'd like to move out to the public hearing of interim superintendent, of the interim superintendent contract. I'd like to open this session for public comment solely on the interim superintendent contract, if there is any. Seeing no public comment, I would like to ask for a motion to approve the resolution for the interim superintendent's contract.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Linda, may we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Versa? I'm sorry. Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simarusty?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Interim Superintendent. I would like to now move to the board committee reports. Claire, may we have the curriculum instruction committee report, please?
Yes, though I do have icing all over my hands. And I'm a little disheartened that not everybody came up and got cake. So thanks to you, you cake eaters, that showed your true Highland Park spirit. The curriculum committee did meet tonight. We mostly discussed policies and some new curriculum. And on the agenda, I'd call your attention to number five, the approval of the middle high school archery program. And that's all I will draw your attention to.
Perfect. Are there any comments?
Can I ask about four? Four is the approval of the rewritten ELA curriculum. On the last agenda was the rewritten, I believe, fourth grade curriculum. And we tabled that, but I don't see that back, but this one's on, but, and I think this one was in our packets this time. And last time we had tabled the fourth grade curriculum because it wasn't in our packets. So I guess I'm just wondering if the curriculum committee did review the 10th grade curriculum? If you've gotten a chance to see the fourth grade curriculum, like what's the...
We did not see the fourth grade curriculum, but we did have a chance to review the 10th grade curriculum.
Very good.
So is the fourth grade curriculum coming back to us at some point or?
Yes. Yes, but, yes, but we haven't had, we haven't had enough opportunity to see it yet, so as soon as it comes back to the committee, then, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Ms. Bull, can we have the finance and facilities report?
The finance committee did meet tonight. We talked about Bartle School window replacement, that's ongoing. We received an offer from the Adidas Garden State Track Club to provide a snow blower to clear the snow off the track for our winter track team, which has been reinstated in the district. The weight room is still, is almost ready. Budget preparations are, are beginning soon. I will just, I'll go through a very rough calendar for people, just so they have an idea of where we're headed. Mid-December, we'll be, the, the administration will be reviewing enrollment changes and staffing needs. They'll be talking to the principals from December through early January, talking about school budgets and other administrators for their departments. December through early January, also preparing a district-level expenditure budget projections. Mid to late January, reviewing draft budget at the administrative level. Late January to mid-February, administrators will be preparing a presentation to the board regarding critical needs and projected budget increases, discussing priorities of additions or deletions from the budget in February. They're going to be delivering, developing a list of potential additions or deletions from the budget with the board. February 26th, they anticipate receiving the state aid numbers. The preliminary budget to the public will be presented sometime mid to late March and they'll be continuing discussions and presentations to the board and the public with a final budget presented at late April. We also talked about, just reviewed the items on the agenda. Item nine and 10 is the annual audit report. We talked about this at the last meeting. The auditor will be coming in on, in January to present the report. And that's it.
I just want to quickly add about the budget that this year is going to be quite hard. There are a number of unexpected costs to this year's, to this year's budget and we are going to have to take a hard look at everything from services and staffing and overall expenditures for the, for the next year's budget. Just want to make everybody prepared for that. We'll get into that as the principals and everybody meet and bring recommendations to the board. With that, are there any other comments?
Linda, do you have information about 14? That just seems really interesting. It's the digital readiness, learning and assessment program. That's, we're starting a contract in 2017.
This is the statewide broadband initiative. The Middlesex Regional Educational Services Committee, Commission serves the central region of the state and they went out to bid for broadband services on an aggregate level for the districts in the central region. They awarded the bid contract and districts who are strongly encouraged, if not required, to participate, we already had opted into the program months ago. But the way that this works is if you already have a contract for broadband service, you're not required to break your contract. Once your contract expires, then you are in on the new contract. So what this does is it allows us to participate once the time is right for us to get into the new contract.
Right, so is this significantly less than what we have now?
It is, yes. The prices came in very, very good. We did even consider the option of breaking the contract, but the cost to break the contract would pretty much negate the savings that we would see. So it really doesn't make sense to do it early.
See how they get you.
Yeah, but it's, once we do get to 2017, we'll be saving quite a bit of money.
And that we're like locked at that rate for that many years out?
Well, I guess as long as that contract goes and then they'll probably go out again to bid again.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Anne, can we have the personnel report, please?
Personnel, personnel committee met tonight and discussed a number of personnel issues. On the agenda, you will see that as a result of having completed the contract negotiations and having a signed contract, that this is the, the new salary guide and as a consequence of new salaries for both last year and this year. So there will be a, a retroactive bump that teachers will get based on what they would have gotten last year because we took some time to complete the contract this year. And as the student rep has mentioned, we'd like to, we'd like to say with regret that we're going to miss Mala Maharana and, and we're sorry to see her go. And that's it.
What about the addendum?
Oh, well, what about the addendum?
Just that it's there.
I didn't, I didn't move anything.
No, I know, I'm just...
Yes, we are...
Pointing out to people that it's, that the addendum exists.
Item number 25, we are appointing the middle, a middle school principal as a full-time hire.
Jennifer Knapp.
And yes, and Ms. Knapp as well, receiving a new, a new position. Any other comments? With that, I will give the, I will give the policy committee report, I guess, okay. I just, the policy committee did not meet, however, we did discuss the email change to a policy for second reading that we will make a recommendation on. We are going to table all of our first reading policies. They will not be out for a discussion or movement tonight. We will only be moving policies for second reading. And I would like to make...
Can I ask why?
Why? Because it is, after consultation with our attorney, it's more appropriate that policies be moved for first and second reading by the same continuous board and not two different boards.
Which makes sense and is fantastic, but would have been nice to know before we spent all the time.
Well, you're going to have to, you're going to have to do them next week, so...
Yeah, but it's nice to kind of have that fresh in your mind, not, you know...
I spoke to the attorney three seconds before the meeting started, so that's the decision that we're going with tonight and I understand that as well. Policies for second reading, most of us have read of them, we've discussed it. I would like to make one suggestion to a change, that the, that the policy committee was unanimous in its decision. We would like to change the policy on presidential duties of a president and vice president, 0169, to include, to include language in, where it speaks about time limits, to create time limits of total discussion by...
Where is that in the policy?
Sorry, it's, I believe, the fourth paragraph? Let me just pull up the policy.
That was 0167?
017, 0171.
0171.
Second.
Sorry. I don't have my, there it is, there it is, thank you.
I don't, I don't think that we added this to the public.
Yeah, I don't think, I think-
I don't think it was part of the president's responsibilities. I think it was actually-
You're right. The comment that we discussed was related to 0171. So it is actually in-
0167, I think.
Yeah.
And it's there.
No, the change, the language is not, the language that we want is not there. Sorry, 0167, here it is, yes. For number two, in the event it appears the public comment portion of the meeting may extend 30 minutes, the presiding officer may limit each statement made by a participant to five minutes, to a five-minute duration. The new language that we would like is time limits of total discussion by, by the public, discussion of, is that the discretion, okay, time limits of total discussion by the public, discussion of any individual item or individual statements may, may be established by the president.
Say that he's, he's, he's somewhere on-
Item number two.
It's something they're adding completely.
Number two, we are rewriting number two to read-
You're re, you would, you're suggesting that we'd like, we would rewrite it as?
Yes. Time limits for total discussion by the public, discussion of any individual item or individual statements may be established by the president.
So, yeah, there is the sentence below.
No, because they're talking about limiting the entire public comment section, session.
No, no, we're not. We're talking about individuals.
You said, read it again. This is something that we need, I'm sorry. I mean, to me, this has to be presented in writing well in advance. I don't want to decide on that.
Why? This is, comments for second reading, this is how we do it. We talk as a board and we make the decisions.
I think what Darcy is saying, she'd like to see it written out so she could look at the whole thing.
It's the first sentence of the, of the blacked out, crossed out below, with, with the omission of, with the consent of the board, I think.
Ah. So it's what was struck. You're asking for it to be put back in, or you're replacing the two that we have now with that?
We were replacing two with that, and just leaving it the sole discretion of the board to limit, I mean, the president to limit the time limit, to create time limits on individuals.
So, I mean, this does give the board the, the ability to limit, it says limit for total discussion by the public, which to me is remarkably unclear. Does that mean in both public comment sessions, you're going to limit both of them to X amount of time overall for both sessions? Like, what is, what are the parameters?
Time limits for individuals.
But that doesn't say individuals. It says time limits for total discussion by the public.
I'm sorry, Adam, don't you mean individual items, not individual people? I'm looking at the email.
Because number two actually says, each statement may be, made by a participant may be limited. That's what it says.
I think the object of this was to take out the time limits, and leave it at the discretion of the president to create those time limits as needed.
But-
And not put an arbitrary number in there.
But then why can't we just leave two to read, in the invented, it appears the public comment portion of the meeting may exceed 30 minutes, the presiding officer may limit each statement made by, made by a participant.
That's fine.
Period. Just get rid of the five minutes.
That's fine.
Not add in all that other-
I think that's wise, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, that's fine with me. And, you know, and I had taken issue last time with the presiding officer and the, you know, the, without the consent of the board. But then I went and I looked at, like, I just kind of picked 10 other districts at random, and nobody else had that in, and they all had with the presiding officer. So, you know, I mean, it is kind of standard operating procedure. So I can go with that.
Perfect. Sounds good. And that's the only change that I have. Are there any-
So we're just getting rid of two, made by participant. We're just getting rid of the words two, five minutes duration. Okay.
Although I will say, the other policies that I looked at, they all did have the time there. Some of them were four minutes, some of them were five minutes, some of them were six minutes. They did put a number to it.
So we had this, we had this discussion last week about an arbitrary number.
Huh?
We had the discussion last week about an arbitrary, or putting an arbitrary number.
I think it gives the board more flexibility if we can judge each situation, you know, sort of accordingly.
Right.
All right. Any other, any other changes to any other policy?
Yeah, I had a couple of things. On 2417, there's a- Each school building. So it says Board of Education, the first sentence directs the establishment and implementation at each school building in which general education, I think the word students is missing there.
I like missing.
Okay.
In which general education are served.
Right here.
Can I ask a question, Adam? I'm sorry. Do you have another correction?
I do. It's a very minor one. In the second paragraph where it says intervention referral services, referral should be capitalized.
What about intervention?
Intervention is capitalized.
On paragraph two?
Yeah, in paragraph two. Students who are, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, there's an, there's an apostrophe in the first paragraph, in the third line, two, three, four, five, six words in, students. There's an apostrophe that doesn't belong there.
Can I ask a question?
Do you have?
Do you have more, Anne?
I'm sorry?
Do you have more corrections to say?
Not on that policy, no.
So I have a question. All the items that were listed on this list that we got is tabled. What's happening with those?
Those were, those were up for first reading tonight. But because, as I said, we're looking to move all policies with the same board, the tabled policies should be-
No, she's talking about the ones that were tabled on the list that we got, not the ones for first reading. There was a list of ones that were tabled.
We got this in the packet that was mailed to us.
No.
So there was a whole bunch on there that, that curriculum committee talked about. Do we need to report on those or not report on those?
They, if you met, if you met and discussed on them, they will be, when, when we moved on, when we moved them, they should be discussed as-
So you made comments on them, so now you're going to give your comments to Linda, and she's going to put them on the next agenda for either first or second reading, whichever is appropriate.
Okay, even the ones that are mandated?
Yeah.
Yes.
They don't have to be done before January?
Apparently, the lawyer says it's not as big a deal.
It's, CUSAC, I think, is like, is, yeah, they haven't, yeah, but we need to do them early in the, in the, they will be, they will be on the, will they be, the first board agenda in 2015, so the January 5 meeting. The policies up for first reading will be on that agenda.
So all we have to do is tell Linda what we discussed today in curriculum committee regarding those tabled policies.
Yep.
I will do that.
Perfect. Thank you for taking such a quick turn, a quick turnaround on those policies as well.
We're very efficient on the curriculum committee, I have to say.
It's always been that way.
I know. They're like a policymaking machine over there.
Anne, do you have other comments?
I do, but just, but not on that policy. On 2431, this was just odd. In all of the other policies where Straussmetz may has, has revised, they have gone from the word pupil to the word student. Apparently pupil is no longer a fashionable word, except in this policy where they changed all the words students to pupil. So I think we should actually change it back to student.
Okay. Linda, can you just do a find and replace on that?
They did it all the way, yeah, I looked on the second page, too. It's all the way through. It's weird.
And I had one other thing. 8465, it seemed to me that it was a policy that we don't really need if, because of HIP.
It's man, it says it's mandatory.
8465?
Yeah, there's a nice M right next to it.
On the agenda, it's, on the agenda, it's listed as mandatory.
And it's on the policy.
Yeah, it's in on the policy.
But not on the, but not on the policy?
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, it is.
Look at the M next to the, the title, the headline.
Oh, okay.
It's right on the title.
Oh, okay. Never mind.
Yeah. Any other comments?
I had a substantive one on 0143, which is-
0143.
Board member election and appointment.
Yes.
On page two of three, it's a combination of between the first paragraph on that page that is struck, and the second to last, the first sentence of the second to last paragraph that is not struck. What, what is being struck out of the policy is that it says the board will meet in public session to interview candidates and to inform them of the duties and responsibilities of board membership. What that's being changed to is in considering candidates who have expressed an interest in a vacancy, the Board of Education may interview candidates in public or executive session. So it's giving the board the option, for I'm not quite sure what reason, to conduct, it sounds, board interviews in closed session. I personally would like to see that remain public.
Well, I don't believe we can interview in closed session, except for, I would imagine, I don't know, I don't even know if I would imagine. You can interview.
So I'd personally like to strike that part out.
Sure. Linda, do you have a comment on that?
No, I don't understand. I agree with you.
Okay. So we would just take out of that first sentence or executive session?
We do have, we do have the opportunity to take a, to take a, the board-
And that's still in here. It's still in here that we can go into closed, we can discuss their qualifications, we can still do all of that, but the, the interview would be in public, the vote would be in public. So, I'm sorry, the interview would be in public, the discussion of qualifications could be enclosed, and then public would be for nominations and votes.
Okay.
Nominations?
Yeah, well, you know, you have to come out, somebody nominate someone, and then you vote on the, the board votes on that person. Or people.
Yeah. Yep. Okay.
So I guess may would be changed to shall or will or whatever.
Just take out executive session.
No, you can't, because then it would be may interview candidates in public, which doesn't make much sense. You'd want to change that to will or shall or-
Why are we even changing it?
Right, it doesn't, we're not changing-
Why are we changing the language? I mean, who, where did the change come from?
I would assume Straussmetz.
This is, can we just leave our language there? Because our language seems to nail it pretty concisely.
Yeah, yeah, we could just switch back that same sentence.
Strike us.
Right. The board will meet in public session to interview candidates and to inform them of the duties and responsibilities of board membership. To a point.
She wants to-
Where?
In the paragraph.
It's in, it's the first, second, third, fourth, fifth, fifth line, starts with the fifth line of the first struck paragraph in the middle of the page. The board will meet.
So you, so what exactly do you want to do?
So we would take that sentence out of the struck paragraph and put that into the first sentence of the, what will be the second paragraph.
And you want to just keep, and the rest of it will remain struck?
Uh, yeah, yeah, yeah. The rest of that paragraph will remain struck.
So we're pulling one sentence out and taking, and that will take the place of the first sentence?
Correct.
Okay.
All right. Do we have the full, do we have it fully together?
I'm, I'm moving the struck paragraph to take the place of the first paragraph, the first sentence, I mean, sentence.
So, yeah, the, the paragraph goes on to say, in the event, interviews are conducted in executive session. So we can't leave that in there.
Going back to Greg's idea, do we lose anything just by-
Switching out the paragraphs?
Yeah, just switch them out. Which is your original suggestion.
Just unstrike.
Just unstrike and strike.
Yeah, the whole paragraph.
Yeah.
I think that's probably wise.
Yes. Do you get that, Linda? To take out the paragraph below it?
So you want to take out the next, the next of the last paragraph in its entirety, and replace it with what?
The fully stricken, stricken paragraph above it.
And what about the paragraph after that?
I would say strike it.
What about the second struck paragraph? I mean, are you-
Unstrike it. Unstrike, unstrike, strike, strike.
So are you recommending not striking and not replacing?
Unstrike, unstrike.
Why do we have to change, we don't even have to move this policy. If it's, if it's the policy of this board, we don't have to move it for a second reading.
There you go.
It hasn't been adopted for first, through first and second reading. Let's not touch it. Let's table it and move on.
I like it. It's not mandatory.
So you're recommending tabling this policy for future discussion?
Indefinitely. No, indefinitely.
No, it's, because this policy stands. We can have reviewed it, and we don't have to do anything to this policy. This policy stands right now.
We're not going to move this policy tonight. We're not going to, we're going to not touch it.
So no, no, none of these, you don't want any of the revisions?
Nothing. Don't worry about it. Just understand that we're table policies.
Or-
Forever. Indefinitely.
It's now officially been reviewed.
We don't, yeah, we don't have to table it.
No, you just, you're not going to-
Not going to move it. Whatever.
We've reviewed it, and that's it.
Okay.
I'm a little confused, but that's okay.
Are there any other comments? Seeing no comments, I would like to open up for public comment. What do we say? The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. Please approach the podium and say your name and address, and sign in with the sign-in sheet in front of you.
Good evening. I'm Melanie McDermott, and I live at 330 South Third Avenue here in town. And several of us are here tonight to talk to you about a program we're very excited about. Sarah's handing out some brochures for this program that's called Sustainable Jersey for Schools. And we wanted to bring it to your attention tonight because the first step to participate in this exciting program requires a school board resolution. So that we're hoping that you can put it on the agenda for the next board meeting. Sustainable Jersey for Schools is a statewide certification program, and our students will tell you more about the content. But I wanted to quickly tell you a little bit about the, the context and the, the mechanics. Some of you may know that Highland Park is, was one of the first silver certified communities for the parent program, which is sustainable jersey at the municipal level. And in fact, our municipality earned two awards at the recent League of Municipalities meeting. So I know that the folks at the program are looking to Highland Park to take leadership again in this brand new schools program. There's a little bit of urgency because there's a window from January to March for schools to register to be in on the first round of certifications, and a new grant opportunity that's going to be announced imminently. That all, that is required is to be registered. Registration is pretty simple. It's an online process, but it requires the uploading of the school board resolution. So in your little packet, there's an insert with a model resolution that can pretty much be adopted straight or modified as, as you guys would wish. But all that it requires basically is that the school board say that the school district has an intent to participate, and it would assign a liaison to the program, and commit to form at least one green team, which can be comprised of teachers, administrators, parents, and students. And our Highland Park Green Team for the municipality is very supportive. We have a member of the Green Team here in the audience tonight. And we, I understand from Irene that there's, was a Green Team previously formed with one teacher from each school for a unitex competition that we won. So there is some, something to build on there. Once the district is registered, then the principal of each school that wants to participate writes a letter to the superintendent and forms a Green Team, because certification occurs at the school level. So the district has to participate, but the middle school could go first, or Irving, or whatever. They each independently have the opportunity to earn points by taking actions in such areas as energy efficiency, sustainable education, health- areas as energy efficiency, sustainable education, healthy school environment, and a host of activities, which, as the brochure says, or I should say, also, you know, really, one of the reasons I, as a parent, am most excited about it, because in addition to the content, which is something we can all get behind, I think, making it a sustainable future, it really allows the kids to take leadership and see that they can make a difference in their own school, in their own environment, on moving big, thorny social problems that, you know, that aren't, that aren't insurmountable, because we can take action locally. And it says, "A certification program for public schools that want to go green, conserve resources, and take steps to create a brighter future, one school at a time." Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sarah Lebo. I live on 227 Valentine Street, and I'm here today to show my support for what Melanie just introduced to you guys. I'm a junior in high school. I am the founder and co-leader of our school's environmental club. I've had the pleasure to work with Haley Conrad, who's behind me. We're also, Haley and I are also members on the board of the Sustainable Highland Park, and we work very, very hard to make the school and community more environmentally friendly. Some of the projects that we've, that just this year have been working on are, we've set up a terracycling bin, which is sort of alternative recycling. We're working on installing a white roof in the school, we're looking into guest speakers coming, et cetera. So as you can see, we're, you know, we're very passionate about this. I'd like to show my support for this project, as it would enable, it would enable us to fix a lot of the problems regarding infrastructure and education surrounding sustainability. One of the ways that this project can help us to solve these problems is through extensive, extensive grant opportunities that we would have access to. And so, just an example of some of the, some of the things that we could be encouraged to pursue in, in this project is school health assessments, policies to promote physical activity, and staff wellness programs. And there's a lot more than that, obviously, there's a lot more, you know, intensive environmental things that we could do. So I'd just like to reiterate what Melanie said, that we are hoping that you would put this on your agenda for the next meeting, because if we, if it's put as a priority by then, we will have time to apply for the first level of certification, and that would be a really great deal, and that would really contribute to the school, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, everybody, I'm Haley Conrad, 200 Amherst Street, and I am one of the co-presidents of the High School Environmental Club, and I'm here to kind of tell you that Sustainable Jersey, New Jersey for Schools is actually a really attainable project for us to pursue. I went through and I did the math and looked at the projects that me and Sarah have been pursuing, and we already have almost all of the requirements to achieve the bronze level of certification. You need a total of 150 points, where if you look at the points category, you can attain through pursuing different projects, and we already have 130 from projects that we've been pursuing just in the past two years. For example, terracycling, which Sarah mentioned, is an example of recycling non-mandated materials. We're also working on composting in the schools, which is another project, that's an example of that, which we're already doing and already implementing. And a lot of these other projects that are mentioned are things that Sustainable Highland Park is pushing the school to pursue already, and they're going to be pursued eventually, no matter what, and by participating in this program, it really makes it easier for us to get us money, to get us more support in the community and in the government. So it's just, it's a really good thing for us to be doing, and again, the urgency of time. So if we could get time to speak at the next meeting and just a place on the schedule, that would be amazing.
Thank you.
I'm in eighth grade, and I'm here on behalf of Highland Park Middle School to say that it is of vital importance for all the schools in the district, including, including the middle school, to join Sustainable New Jersey for Schools. We're the generation of the future, we're the generation of change. If any generation is going to change the world and turn climate change around, it is ours. And for us to do so, it is vital that we get the education that we need. Climate change is not only real, it is something that we can stop, and that's something that people of my generation tend to forget. I cannot stress how important it is to teach the youth to speak up and let their voices be heard on environmental issues. Please give us the opportunity to learn and for Highland Park schools to become leaders in the worldwide movement for environmental change. Please pass a board resolution to bring Sustainable New Jersey for Schools into the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
So Adam, can we, because it's the reorg meeting, does this all have to wait till the 20th?
Can we wait till new business to bring all this up? Please, thank you.
Yep, sorry.
Melissa Newman, 215 Montgomery Street. The first thing I wanted to say was, in terms of messages to parents, if we just did the simple change of sending the messages out as HTML instead of PDF, parents could then use Google Translator to translate the message. Google Translator is not 100% perfect, but it could at least go a majority of the way so that parents can get a general idea of what's going on.
Okay.
And that's something that's very simple, instead of saying save to PDF, you just say save to HTML. The second issue is, I had sent an email to Mr. Soto about Power School Mobile, the Android version, which is for parents and students, and then there's an iOS version, which is for teachers, and I sent a message to the superintendent, the principal of the middle school, and also to the tech person, and alls I got back was that people said that they were looking into it. I was just wondering, Mr. Soto, can you give an update? Has anybody looked into it? From what I can see, alls it is, is you guys just turning it on on your side.
No, I'm not ready to share an update, but I did have a conversation with Brian, and he assured me that he was looking into it, so hopefully by the next board meeting, we'll have a definitive answer for you.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
The next thing is, is that you were talking about wanting to have final class lists by the end of June, but there's one problem with that. New student registrations aren't allowed until July, so even if a family knows that a student is going to be coming into the district the following year, that information's not available for class assignments until July, and I think maybe that should be, if parents know ahead of time that they're going to enroll their kids in the following school year, that they should be allowed to submit that information to the district so that that can be taken into consideration when you're doing class assignments.
That's something that we should look at.
The next thing is, is that when the person was saying that there's only math and language arts benchmarks, I know with my son, he was also having benchmarks in French and in other subjects as well, just so that people are aware that it's not just language arts and math that have benchmarks. And the next thing is, is the park, the park meeting, when you were saying that people are going to have a chance to take the sample tests, I hope that after they take the sample tests, that there'll be a parent, you know, comment session like this, so that people can give feedback about what's, what they experience while taking the sample tests. And the next thing, the last thing is, is that the policies are not posted on the website for the parents to review before the board meeting, and I think that, you know, just like you guys post the agenda 48 hours before the board meeting, policy changes should also be posted 48 hours before the board meeting, so that the parents can look at it, and if we have any questions, we can say it, and preferably store it in some kind of revision system, you know, like a Wiki, or actually, most online content management systems have the ability to do revisions, so that people can see, okay, this was the past, this was the present, this is what they're proposing the changes, these were one person's proposed changes, this is another person's proposed changes. All that stuff's available in open-source products that we could very easily implement into the new website. And that's all.
Okay, thank you.
I live at 123 Johnson Street. This week is Computer Science Week, and as part of Computer Science Week, Reform Church of Highland Park is hosting an hour of code tomorrow at 4 o'clock to introduce middle school and high school students, as well as fourth and fifth grade students, if accompanied by an adult, with, we're hosting an introduction to computer science. So I brought some flyers, it's a free event, I see heads nodding, and I'm hoping that next year, when we have more lead time, we may be able to have a district-wide event, which might include hands-on use of electronic devices. So I brought some flyers, for those of you who may not be aware. Thank you.
Please give them to Linda, or anybody else.
I had one question on a policy, it's the 8465 Hate Crimes and Bias Related Acts. It appears that in the rewrite, gender was left out. The previous statement said sexual orientation or sex, but gender was never rewritten into the policy.
Where, where exactly are you?
So on, on policy 8465, the hate crimes and bias related.
Where in the policy?
So the part that was struck, under the definitions, the last line says ethnic or pertains to affectional or sexual orientation or sex, and then in the rewrite is, because of race, color, disability, religion, sexual orientation or ethnicity, gender is not included.
You're saying, in the first sentence? I don't see that.
Where, okay-- The first sentence of the struck line has sexual orientation or sex.
In the first paragraph?
And that is taken off, that's taken out of--
Right, that's been taken out.
Then let's say--
Sexual orientation or sex.
Gotcha.
But then, gender is not included in the list in terms of categories protected under a hate crime.
Okay.
So I'd like the board to consider re-adding gender--
Hate crime, criminal offense.
--to that policy.
Charisse, I'm sorry, from your, is there, gender would be a better word to include there?
Correct.
Is it--
And sex. Yes, sex is biological.
Let's not get into questions with the public.
We can add gender.
Yeah, well, let's have a discussion in, when we move these on this, in this issue, please.
Okay.
Okay, so the, the other thing that I had a question about, I was sorry that we didn't have, the public didn't have a chance to ask any questions about the presentations that were made earlier. I have a question about the, some of the benchmarking that's being done, and whether or not the curriculum is able to be adjusted for IEPs. Whether, Study Island, for instance, my son has a visual processing disorder, and so if there's too much busy stuff going on on the screen, he can't do what's on the screen. It's too distracting for him, and he is, you know, we have a math tutor he's working with, he doesn't show any signs of cognitive issues, but does seem to be having problems with these online assessments. And I'm wondering whether these programs are designed in only one way, or if for students who have IEPs for different things, whether they are able to be adjusted so that there isn't a ton of information on a page, for instance, in his, in his case, I mean, another child's case would be completely different. I mean, is that something that's in the module?
I think Israel and Ms. Knapp will have to take a look at that and get back to you personally on how that, how that gets implemented.
Okay, and then my, my next question will be, and I know this will probably be something that'll come up at the parents' meeting on park, is, is the park, then, also, does that have those types of accommodations built into it? Because I'm, I'm not completely understanding how that's going to work for a child who has an IEP for visual processing to be able to take an online--
Miss--
--test.
Mm-mm.
So if that's something that can be talked about at that meeting, I will certainly come to that session.
And, and we will, definitely, so, thank you so much for your comments. I'll be having an additional conversation with Jen Knapp and Bill Shalala, and we're going to get that information for you.
Okay.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Hi, Jerry Callahan, 89 Lincoln Avenue. I just wanted to piggyback on Adam's comments regarding the outgoing board members, and I have some brief comments, which, I wrote them down, so I would keep them brief. So, I'd like to thank the outgoing board members. I've had children in the district for 15 years now, and when our youngest graduates next year, it will be 16 continuous years in the district. So, I know from these many years in the district that serving as a board member is truly, truly a thankless job. It's such an important job, I know the amount of time and effort that each and every board member puts into this. I don't know if the public truly appreciates the amount of time that is actually put in by board members, but in any event, it still makes it a thankless job. So, as the three of the board members are leaving, I would like to say thank you. Mr. Wharton, thank you for being willing to volunteer at a difficult time and bringing your knowledge and experience to help Highland Park. I appreciate it. I'm sorry, Mr. Ross is, is not here, but I'm sure my words will make to him. Mr. Ross and Mr. Dietz, both of you have served on the board for several years now. I can say without hesitation that over these years, there has never been a doubt in my mind that each and every vote you have taken has been with the best interests of the students and the district and at the forefront of your minds. So thank you for volunteering and unselfishly dedicating your time, energy, and talents over these past years to the students, the staff, the district, and the community of Highland Park. I, for one, truly appreciate all of the work you have done. Thank you.
Can you see me?
Not your eyes.
Boy, this is awkward. First, I would like to say a few words about the outgoing board members. While we have had our disagreements over the years, we have had very spirited and productive negotiations, particularly with Greg, and I would like to say personally that Greg has been an upstanding community member and certainly a model dad, and I have truly enjoyed teaching your family, and appreciate your honesty and your candor in your work. And Ashley, thank you for coming in, in a moment when our district was in crisis, and offering everything that you could and your expertise to the board. Thank you. I would also like to say how fortunate we are to have Mr. Soto for another, up for review for another six months. We are entering a period of true collaboration and, I think, unprecedented growth in this district. While many of the events of the past year were unacceptable and unfortunate, sometimes you come out of the fire better, stronger, and more productive for your purposes than you were before. And that takes a lot of work. We are all putting in the work that is necessary, and we are seeing results. The scheduling committee, the ESL committee, the benchmarking, the progress that has been made in the past four months is something-- is something that we are, we really don't want to lose. We're encouraged. We're inspired, and we want it to continue. So we're pleased to have Mr. Soto for another six months. And we would stress that this is the kind of relationship that builds schools for our children that are exceptional, special, unique, and thoughtful. And that everyone involved will put in the effort to make this happen. So thank you for, Mr. Soto, for your collaboration. Every time I come to Mr. Soto with an issue, it gets resolved, or it gets addressed. And we don't always agree, but we come to some sort of compromise. And that is greatly appreciated. So I'd just like the public to know that we're on the upswing. We are vigilant. We are welcoming our new board members and are excited to have them as part of the process as well. And looking forward to, as I said, a period of unprecedented growth and stability and communication. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Seeing no other public comment, I'd like to move to the other portions of the agenda. Oh, okay. Would you like to speak?
Can I say anything I want?
Yeah.
Maybe it's not the right time, because I don't know if you covered it yet or not. I just want to talk about the resignation of the math teacher.
Absolutely.
All right. All right, Judy Ng. Mala, I'm going to address her by first name. All I know is that she's an excellent teacher.
Can I just ask you to speak in the mic? I'm sorry. Yeah. Sorry.
I'm going to have to get taller. Mala is just a really good teacher. And I know STEM, you know, the science, technology, engineering, math, there's a lot of emphasis there. And when you get a really good math teacher, you need to find a way to hang on to them. Not easy to find, difficult areas like the sciences. We've already had the Merg around, you know, with the science teachers. And to lose a really good math teacher is just, somehow you guys need to figure out a way to counter and keep her here, because it's just hard to find good math teachers. It's just disappointing in this district. You know, when I moved here 31 years ago, you know, and didn't have kids in the system, that later on I heard, oh, it's a good school system and stuff. Then I find all these other issues, like I said, the musical chairs with the science teachers in the high school. Now I'm addressing the high school. I'm not addressing the other schools. But that's when it really counts, you know? And then to find that, you know, right in the middle of an AP class, that teacher's going to leave. And that, and I don't know what Highland Park is doing about it, but they need to stem the tide when you get a good teacher, especially math and sciences. You guys need to figure out a way to hang on to them. You know, when you tenure someone that's bad, 30 years of kids get punished. When you can't hang on to a good teacher, those generations, they also get punished. Somehow you guys need to figure out a way. In the private sector, we counter. Find a way, figure out a way to make it happen. But it's just disappointing that I see, you know, in these areas. It's not easy to keep these teachers. That's one of the areas where, I hate to say it, everyone goes, oh, look at Highland Park, look at the AP scores, look at this and that. Sorry, guys. You know, a lot of people take classes outside because they need to supplement bad science stuff or something else that happened here with the Merg around of the chemistry teachers and everything else, you know? But you have a math teacher that actually is really good. And you don't need to supplement. And then, you know, they're going to leave. This, that area needs to be addressed. Otherwise, you're punishing, you know, more generations of kids.
Thank you. This, yeah. This has been an issue that boards before I've sat on have dealt with for such a long time, just because of the size of our school. You know, it's one of the, it's one of the things that we've always tried to figure out, how we can pay a fair salary and keep great teachers when there's other opportunities at other places. So it's definitely something we could look in, in greater detail. But it's just also one of the consequences of our size. So with that, any other public comment?
Hi. Michelle McFatt and Deena Cola, 118 South Second Avenue. So I had a couple of things to say, but I know that just living through a campaign, I wanted to say that I appreciate your service. The campaign itself is exhausting, so. It's a big job, and I hope it's not a thankless job. I mean, I'm looking forward to it. So that's really what I came up here to say, is that I loved the presentations. I thought that they were outstanding. But at the same time, I was very excited to see the presentations. I was also a little frustrated, because I know that several dozens of us got up last year to talk specifically to those changes that were made that we are now in the process of putting back together, cleaning up, finding solutions to. And I don't really think that we need to talk about that, but I just wanted to point out that it's probably a really great time for everyone to be paying attention to the direction that we're moving in, because I think that we're moving in a good direction, it looks like. I was very happy with all of the presentations. And I'm glad to see that Mr. Soto is mentioning the district's need for thoughtful and careful planning. I think that's really important, because what I saw last year was a lot of trial and error. And I don't, I don't believe that anyone really thinks that that's the right way to run a district, to trial and error your way through programs and decisions. And we saw what that did to us. And I'm really happy to see that we're moving in a different direction, that we're planning and we're thinking in a more positive way. So I just wanted to mention that. And then there was one thing that I heard said about the upcoming Park exam that kind of disturbed me to the point of really needing to get up and speak to that, was that the comment that was made about the park that no one is being held accountable this year. And I think that that was specific to the teachers and their job security. I'm just guessing. But if you've taken the park, it's available online, the questions are available. I encourage everyone to come and participate in this offering that we're having, that we can see what this is all about. This is more than hard. And I appreciated Adam saying that it was really hard for him as a graduate student. This, as a child, is going to be ruinous in a lot of different ways. Kids are going to be convinced that they are bad at math, that they are not good readers. They're going to be frustrated. Unfortunately, I'm guessing, from what I've been seeing in other areas of the country that have taken part in this, they're going to be frustrated to tears. Once you do that to a child, you really need to work very hard to rebuild that. So these kids are held accountable with this Park exam coming up. And that's not to be taken lightly. So I am looking forward to my time on the board, and I am looking forward to working with everyone on this upcoming change with the Park exam. And I would love to see the entire community out for this event. So thank you for holding that event for us.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Seeing no public comment, I'd like to move to the movement portion of the agenda. Claire, may I have the curriculum motions, please?
Yes, I would like to move items 1 through 6 on the agenda under curriculum.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any comments? Linda, may I have the roll call, please?
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Semerusti?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Wharton?
Yes.
Sorry. May I, Ms. Bull, may I have the finance?
I'd like to move items 1 through 20.
Is there a second?
Second.
Linda, may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Semerusti?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Wharton?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber, may I have the personnel, please?
Yes, I'd like to move items 1 through 23 on the regular agenda and 24 and 25 on the addendum.
Is there a second?
Second. Oh, wait.
Yes.
No, it's one, I'm sorry, what did you say? Did you say 1 through?
1 through 23, and then 25.
But it's 25.
And then 24 and 25.
No, it's 25 on the agenda.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. 24 and 25 are on the, on the actual agenda.
Okay, so then I think the addendum is misnumbered.
Yes.
Sorry.
Yep, hold on.
I'm sorry, I just happened to be scrolling all the way down.
I see, we're going to remedy this. Where's the agenda?
So the addendum is actually 26 and 27.
But the register, but the addendum is the resignation of Ms. Maharoon.
Which?
Is on the agenda.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So, yeah, so I'd like to move items, the addendum is misnumbered.
It should be 26 and 27.
26 and 27. So I'd like to move items 1 through 25 on the
It's two totally new things.
On the regular agenda, and so the new 26 and 27 on the addendum.
Perfect. Thank you. Is there any other comments? May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Semerusti?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Wharton?
Yes.
Can, Policy Committee, can I have a motion to move item 2 with the changes?
Excluding Policy, excluding Policy 0143.
Yes, excluding Policy 01
43.
43. Can somebody please make that motion?
And are we making the change that Sharice mentioned to 8465? We didn't discuss that.
We did not discuss that. I don't understand.
I think we have to add, you know what, I think we need to table that so that we can, because I think none of us actually understood exactly. I think we all need to go back and be able to read it and put the
I mean, I think it was fairly simple. It was just, gender was
Yes, I understood she wanted us to insert gender. I did not understand where.
Also, the word affectational has also been taken out, and I'm not quite sure why.
Okay, yeah, I mean, if everyone prefers to table it, I mean, I think it is, it may be just as simple as putting the word back in, the word gender back in, but I'm happy with tabling it as
Where, where is gender going?
Gender wasn't in, it was sex, I think.
Sex, right, changing sex to gender.
If you look at the bold-faced paragraph, the one that's supposed to be there, it should say, "A hate crime is any criminal offense where the person or persons committing the offense acted with the purpose to intimidate an individual or group of individuals because of race, color, disability, religion, sexual orientation, gender, or ethnicity."
You know, that's, that's said on the second page.
It is on the second page.
Right, it is said on the second page.
Yeah, the very opening paragraph, the bold on the second page, it's inclusive of gender as well. Which is what I was going to say.
So we, so we do need to table it and get with, somebody needs to advise, because I don't know what, then, I see why we're distinguishing these, but I don't understand the reasoning for distinguishing between these.
I mean, isn't a hate crime defined by the state of New Jersey and not by this policy?
I have to say, the reason I didn't read this policy carefully is because I looked at it and I thought, this is covered by him. I don't understand why we have to have both.
That's another great point.
I mean, when I spoke to the folks at Strauss ESMA at the workshop, I mean, they seemed very open to just a phone call to ask for that kind of clarification.
We have the policy briefs that we get. I mean, if we want to table this, we're going to have to bring it back for first reading.
That's fine.
But
Well, why don't we do that?
Who does this, what policy, who does this fall under? This falls under
This falls under, I believe, the 8465. This is, I think, one of the split, the split numbers. Is that right, Linda? The eights and, the eights are split between
As far as whose committee?
I would send this to the curriculum committee.
Definitely curriculum.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not finance.
Yeah, it's definitely not finance. I would send this to the curriculum committee, Claire.
Okay.
Thank you. You guys are the policy machine anyway, so.
We are the machine.
Yes, so we're going to need a motion now to not, to move items 2 with changes excluding 0143 and 8465.
Tabling 8465.
And tabling 8465.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? Linda, may I have a roll, please?
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Semerusti?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Wharton?
Yes.
The President's word. I will take a quick moment to just quickly talk about the opt-out policy, the opt-out issue that was spoken about earlier. This is something that this board is going to have to take up. There is a number of, there's a substantial amount of research and consultation that this board is going, that the board is going to have to do before we come to a conclusion. I just want the community to know that this is something that we are looking at, and we are looking at all the ramifications surrounding any type of issues and policy and concerns brought to us by parents. This is something that will be evaluated in the very near future. And it is something that is going to have to take a great deal of research and consultation with our attorneys and a number of educational staff members and our administration as well. So I do want to just acknowledge that, that's something that we will be looking at.
Dare I say, we form a committee?
No. This is something that's going to be taken up first by the board and a discussion at that level. I would like to now move to old business. Is there any other old business? Is there any new business besides the calendar and the honeywell system?
Well, so the sustainable jersey.
Yes.
I think that, I think it's, because the next meeting is the reorg meeting, and because there won't be a sitting president to set an agenda, I think this is going to have to wait till the January 20th.
Yeah, I mean, I would agree with that. I would hate to, for us to lose
To lose any opportunities, but it seemed like they were saying that we could do it if we did it in January. So I wonder, Israel, if somebody can reach out and make sure that that's okay?
Yeah, it looks like we haven't, they haven't
And I think we actually, we also have to come up with a resolution, so I don't know that.
Which is that.
Yeah, but we would have to do that before the, I mean
Yeah, no, I agree with you. Excuse me. It's, I think it would be inappropriate for us to push it, to say that it will happen
On the 5th. I think that we could easily get it onto the agenda on the 20th. And I don't think that there's any resistance to participating in the program, but I think it's just not going to make it on the
It looks like it's between January 15th and March 30th is the rolling application, online application deadline.
So I think that if we do the 20th, we're probably safe.
I'll volunteer to find out about this, if it takes it off Israel's plate. Because I, my work is associated with this program, so.
Oh, cool.
Easy. Is there any other new business before we move to the agenda items? Seeing no new business, Israel, would you like to talk about the board calendar? Oh, we got, is this a board school year calendar? Oh, I thought this was
No, it's the board calendar.
It's the board meeting calendar.
I don't want, I didn't want to deal with the board calendar tonight. Board calendar, just this. This is a normal calendar. Any other, any comments? This is just
This is just a normal calendar. There are no major changes. So we try to, you know, track what's been done in the past and just follow that, that pattern.
Any other comments?
There's only one meeting in November and one in December?
And one in April.
There's only one in April.
Yeah.
The April one is about spring break. But I think, you know, we, in the past, we have had only one meeting in November, and this year we had two, and I thought that was actually better. I wonder if there's any way to add the second meeting back in.
There are two in November.
Oh, there are.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. We don't, no. We don't have until November. This only goes through August of 2015.
Oh, okay.
Never mind.
So this, the difference is there's only one in April. But I think part of the thinking was there'd be additional, probably budget meetings scheduled, and there'd be other opportunities to meet.
Also, the spring break is in there as well. Also, the, the spring break is in there as well. And that's always, that's always the tricky time.
My question is, is once this is set, is there an opportunity to change it? I mean, so we could potentially, if we wanted to...
We just have to advertise. Yes, we can add meetings. We can, we can even change the date of meetings, as long as we give sufficient notice.
Okay. Because I did notice on the website, all that's up is through the January, the first January meeting, so we do need to get something else up there. But it's conceivable that the new board may want to make changes.
Comments? I don't know what the use of the Honeywell system is. Do you have a, just...
Just very briefly, currently, we're using the Honeywell system, and we're paying close to $5,000 a year. We're only using it to advertise the closing of schools. We would like to add to that bus emergencies and after-school emergencies. Because we've had situations where we've had emergencies, and we've had to physically call parents.
Does it add to the cost?
No, no.
So, yeah, I'm, previous super...
We're not taking advantage.
...had a very odd idea about what we could and couldn't use this for. I'm all for using it for whatever we need to.
Well, we're not taking advantage of all of it.
Can we, though, truncate it so it can only contact people who are in those programs?
Absolutely.
Perfect. Don't want to math, don't want to spam everybody. Okay, done, do it, check. Any other new business? If we can open up this round, for the second round of public comment, the Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and reserve this time for your comments. Are there any comments?
I'm going to have to turn around, I'm going to be quick. Robert Slavich, 123 Magnolia Street. I have a quick question for the board. Where do we stand right now with the technology plan for the district?
The district has a technology plan that's been adopted and submitted to the state.
We have one?
We've always, we've always had a technology plan.
Okay, so we're going back to the one that was adopted, was it a year and a half ago?
We've always had a technology plan. The, we've, as you know, the board has reviewed, has had technology committees and is in the process of reviewing a number of ways to move forward with technology.
Okay, so we're...
But to say that we don't have a plan is not accurate. We have a technology plan that's been adopted and submitted to the state.
I think it was your own comment, that the technology plan that we have was out of date and not really germane to the district.
I still stand by that, but we do have a technology.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public comment?
Now that you've accepted Mala's resignation, I just really want to know, what do you plan to do? So that the AP test is in May. She's leaving in the January. That's the time to prep for the test. Just can't pick any old substitute that never taught it.
Well, Judy, we, I had a wonderful conversation with Mala, and I have to agree, that was a great loss. It really was. And you're, you made the comment, can we strike a deal and see that? We had a conversation about that, unfortunately. Well, she had signed a contract, and it would be unethical for me to strike any kind of deal